Good evening and welcome to the public hearing and discussion meeting of the Norwalk Common Council. It is 6:04, June 24, 2025. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clark, will you please call the roll? Mr. Burnett. Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Ms. Jagelski-Eichner.
I'm here, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Ayers?
Present.
Mr. Seed? Mr. Wiggins?
Here.
Ms. Young? Ms. Edie?
Here.
Ms. Winters Strand?
Here.
Ms. Dunn? Mr. Sutton? Mr. Brer?
Here.
Ms. Shanahan?
Here.
Mr. Burnett? Mr. Seed? Ms. Young? Ms. Dunn? Mr. Sutton? We have 10 attendees, we have a quorum. Thank you. So, this is the public hearing for the charter revision from the... We received the recommendations from the Charter Revision Commission. We have had a couple of workshops and now this is the opportunity for the public to weigh in based on some of the workshops that we have had. So, is there anyone here in council chambers that would like to speak? Ms. Laura Chella. Please state your name and address and you have 30 minutes.
For the record, Diane LaRocella, 21 Little Fox Lane. Good evening, I'm so happy there's air conditioning here today. I just wanted to speak about some things I've already spoken to the commission about. I first wanted to thank the city, the council, the mayor, and the Charter Revision Commission for taking up such an enormous task. And of course Attorney Mendick as well for his wise counsel, I didn't always agree with him, but I still was impressed. Anyway, I'm here tonight because I just wanted to reiterate some things that I would like you to consider. I understand that one of the items that has been brought forth to you or presented to you by the commission is a four-year term. And I would just ask that this question be separate from other questions. I do think it's customary to have separate questions. It would not be unusual to break down questions maybe by category so that our, the public, who obviously has not been following this the way I was hoping they would have, could maybe in their minds as they're at the voting booth be able to kind of capitalize on themes or something to that effect. Also, I think it behooves all of us, especially the council, boards and commissions, and the League of Women and Voters who this time also did not step in and, to my knowledge, I'm a former president, but that was many years ago. I'm going to ask them as a former member to weigh in and just advocate for people to read the charter questions and maybe have some workshops in addition. And that's something that the council members can also do. There's no one that ever says you can't reach out to your constituents. I wish there were more creative ways that many of you would do so, and some of you have tried. The other thing that I wanted to advocate for was the expansion of the number on the council. I have put forth several reasons why I think it would be terrific for democracy in Norwalk. First one is because over the many, over 40 years that I've lived here, through many different councils, both Republican-dominated and Democrat, several people were assigned to three to four committees. Of course, we have Ms. Dunn, who is assigned to all the committees if she wants to go because...
30 tickets remaining?
Yes. And I think that it would behoove you for rethinking this. I've heard a rumor that 15 is, someone has said the sweet spot. I think in a city of this size, 20 is a better sweet spot. It not only gives people more time, more people, including minority parties, to weigh in, they just have to learn how to have a good campaign where they don't just complain, they give solutions. And maybe they would win more of the elections, and I've said this before. Lastly, I just, I just think it would be very important so that all of you have more time to do your due diligence, in theory, because you would not be assigned to as many committees. So, thank you for hearing me. I wish there were more people that are going to speak tonight because I know the commission did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaRocella. Is there anyone who is on digitally that would like to speak? Please raise your hand. I see Lisa Britton.
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent. Lisa Britton, 19 Sherreford Park, Independent Party Town Chair. I will be brief. Since 2016 through three Democrat-controlled Charter Revision Commissions, the public has begged this administration to improve and diversify the representation of our local government. Three times, anyone not a Democrat has been ignored, insulted, or gaslighted. I'd like to ask you guys, what's wrong with independent Heather Dunn? Or Republicans Doug Hempstead, or Rick McQuade, or Rich Bonifant, who takes your photos on a regular basis? I won't belabor you with the research I compiled over the last decade. Most of you have heard it, seen it, read it, and don't care. So, I'm just going to leave you with what I posted on my social media page of Save Norwalk Neighborhoods a few hours ago. And it's this. Single-party rule isn't working at a national, state, or local level. Power corrupts and absolute power breeds mediocrity. Forty-nine percent of Norwalk has no say in its local government. There's no transparency, there's no accountability, and there is no, once again, minority party representation, despite most of this state having it. So, basically, it's going to be noted charter revision in November. And the campaign starts tonight because the continuing ignoring of what the public has asked for and sticking in all these other things that dance around the topic is just not fair. You know this is a blue state and a blue city, and forty-nine percent of the public is excluded. If it's Texas, it works that way for Republicans. But you're excluding half of the community and, and you have the opportunity to fix it. Every other city in Connecticut has it, and you choose not to. And that's a shame. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Britton. Rich Bonifant?
Evening, Rich Bonifant, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. Um, as I'm reading some of the later things that are going into this, from recommendations to workshops or whatever you guys got going, I see the plan all along was kind of a power grab to get a four-year term and to get paid. All right? That, that, that's pretty obvious. All right, this council has not seen a constituent at a committee meeting in four years since COVID. Right? You've totally lost touch. You don't see, you don't have committee meetings in person. You don't have to look people in the eye, you don't even see me now. I mean, I see you on the Hollywood squares, but I, you know, you don't see the people that are pouring their heart out. Right? Honestly, I don't think you should be allowed to vote remotely. Right now, you could be at a gambling table at Las Vegas with your iPad and vote at a hot half-billion-dollar budget in the city of Norwalk. Right? You know, you shouldn't be allowed to vote remotely. And one more thing about the, about the referendum and how many signatures you need to get a referendum started. It's, it's not the amount of signatures you need to get the referendum started. It's the amount of, it's the amount of voter turnout you need to actually take effect. Right? Unless you get a certain percentage, and I don't know, it might be 25% of the voters, I don't know, I don't, I don't know the number, but whatever happens, if, if so many people don't show up, winners or losers on the, on the referendum don't count. Okay? So, thank you very much. Rich Bonifant, 17 Park Hill Avenue, in case I forgot to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonifant. Diane Cece?
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I, I'll be brief and save my own breath on this. I feel like I've been doing this every cycle this comes around, but I would be remiss if I don't speak up, so I want to make sure I'm on the record. But, but I will say that I agree with everything that Lisa Britton just said, so we can just take a ditto on that in the minutes, please. And I think it's a shame that, you know, essentially because of this, the issue with the four-year term, that there are some good pieces of things that would have changed in this sharp discharter that are otherwise going to now, you know, die in ugly death because of it, and I think that's unfortunate. I, I, as long as this four-year term is hanging overhead with, with no consideration for any changes at the state level to allow term limits. We don't, you know, people who are in power don't tinker with the people that put them in power. And, and also, I don't think that, I'm sorry, I'm losing my train of thought here. With, with the term limits, I think that, you know, unless there's any consideration for that, but also in the absence of the recognition of the minority party representation. It's just insane that, that the really, you know, I know there was a lot of discussion around it, but it's just crazy that we're going through this process again and it's not really being taken seriously. And I, and I'm not sure I understood Mr. Bonifant, but I am a proponent of at least the modest changes that got done to the thresholds for the referendum this time. And I think that'll make a difference for the, for the voters and the residents of Norwalk. So, unfortunately, as an individual and as a resident, as a voter and as a taxpayer, I'm certainly going to make sure that I do my part to make sure this doesn't go through, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cece. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If there's anyone else, please raise your hand. Okay, I see no one else, and so I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And now we will move on to our discussion. And just a reminder, there will be no votes tonight. What we are expected is to vote during the July 8 Common Council meeting. And we may be scheduling another meeting next week. So, I just want to make the public aware that there may be an additional workshop scheduled next week, probably Tuesday at 6 o'clock, or possibly Wednesday. I don't want to say for sure when that is because we haven't, I haven't really looked at the calendar yet, but it is a holiday week, so, you know, it will certainly be earlier in the week. So, keep a lookout for that. And so, what, where we left off in the last workshop was we were, we had finished Article 10. But we did have some questions, and there were some follow-up questions. And so, we invited our chief exec, our Chief Financial Officer Jared Schmidt to join us. And so, Jared, if you could just give us a brief look at where we've come, you know, where our budget is, where the city budget is at this time, and what we might expect for next year's operating budget. So, just, you know, a brief update on where we're at there.
Can we, okay?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good evening, everybody. And thank you. I got word that you, that you were looking for a presentation on, on the budget for this year and also an update on a next year's budget. And so, we put something together. I want it to be, whenever, whenever we do these things and the budget's not finalized, I always like to caveat and say, "The budget's not finalized." And, and there's going to be some, there will be some entries and, and other, other changes that are made and more revenue coming in and more, more expenditures that hit that, that may not be in the system right now. So, this is all preliminary. So, for FY '25, what our expectation right now is that we would be, we would be $4 million to the good, have a surplus of $4 million to the good without using any of the rainy day fund, any of the fund balance. We had budgeted $8 million in fund balance for this year. So, effectively, looking at it another way, if you did add in that $8 million, we'd be about $12 million to the good. That's kind of, that's, that's the really high, high level. And I'll go into a little bit of detail on some of the, what's driving that. So, what's on the revenue side of things? We had some changes come up. On the spending side, we had some changes come up. So, on the revenue side, the collection rate is actually about on pace to what we expected. We budgeted 98.6%, and we expect it to be right about there by the time all is said and done. We had the, the tax sale, which brought in about 5.5 million in revenue, which was, was budgeted. We had, we had a bad guy in there, which was a municipal, municipal grant from the state of $1.8 million that was budgeted. And then unexpectedly, we did not get that, we weren't awarded that grant. So, that was a negative to the budget. And then, building permits and conveyance taxes were up as well, just because of the volume of, of projects. On the spending side, is where a lot of the, a lot more of the positive variance is. And a lot of it had to do with salaries. And if you look at some of the larger departments where there are large numbers of people, there's always turnover, churn. And so, there are times throughout this, throughout the year where not all the positions are filled. And so, there are savings that happen, which is common in departments and in municipal budgets. So, a lot of it was related to that. We also had a, originally, there was a budgeted dollar amount for our OPEB contribution, which is the other post-employment benefits to pay for the healthcare for retirees. And we get the number from our actuary every two years, in the case of OPEB. And we had originally budgeted about $2.5 million. We, because of that, that, because that fund is so well-funded, we only needed to put in about $425,000. So, we had a, we had a savings there of about $2.1 million in OPEB because it's, it's more than, more than 100% funded, which is, which is phenomenal. There, I don't think there's another city in the state that has their OPEB more than 100% funded. And it's a, you know, kudos to everybody before, before I came for being consistent and committed to putting money into that fund. We had a couple of unfavorable things in the form of social security and 401A contributions. We had collective bargaining agreements, which, you know, we, we did within the 25 budget. We did put money into contingency to cover that, and it will end up covering that. There was also funding included in the department budgets, which will, which will more than cover it. So, there, there is excess funding there to between what was, what was put into the department budgets to cover salary increases and what was put into contingency to cover salary increases. I think everybody, I think everybody's pretty aware of what happened with the Board of Education and the agreement, so I don't want to go into too much detail about that, other than to say $3 million from city and $3 million from the state. And in the end, to get it across the line, there was an additional $500,000 that was put in to, to, to help with their, with the Board of Ed's reorgan, proposed reorganization, in particular with the special education positions that they wanted to fill. And then the only other point that I want to highlight there, which has been an ongoing issue, and we can talk about it more at another time because it does get a little bit complicated. We carry an internal service fund, which is where money gets contributed for, to cover healthcare and health insurance for employees, also to cover settlements, legal settlements, as well as workers' compensation. The, there's never been a, there's never been a practice, at least not in a number of years, in many years, where the Board of Education has funded the, the settlements portion of it, what we call the LAP portion of it. They haven't, they haven't put anything into that. So, what happens is when there are settlements that hit, if there's not enough funding in there, then the city has to come in and backfill that. But we were, saw this as an opportunity to make the request of the Board of Education to sign on to an approved memorandum of understanding that they would actually contribute and that every year, as part of their budget, they will now have to appropriate money to, to ensure that at least, at least part of the funding for these settlements will be there in the future. And so, that was a, a really good aspect of the, of the agreement that was approved. And it's been going on for years, so we're very happy to see that, that resolve. And then just to, not much that we, that has changed with regard to the FY '26 budget, except to say we have a, there are few items there that we anticipate will, will, will figure out and will play out throughout the year. The school resources, officers, their overtime. Once again, this next year is not included in the budget. We believe that the, that the police department's budget will be sufficient to absorb the, the additional cost, which will be approximately $500,000 for the year. And again, I mentioned earlier, social security, that has, that's gonna, you know, that, that was a, something that we weren't expecting this year. And so, obviously, didn't include it in next year's budget either, so that's going to be an additional cost. And then after the, we never know with the state budget where municipal aid's going to end up. You know, the governor puts out his budget early on, but I'm always hesitant to take that because I, from my experience, many years' experience working in the state, I know that it changes from once on the governor, when, when the proposal comes from the governor, and then the legislature has their input to it. So, I'm kind of loathe to, to, to make a lot of changes based on what the governor's proposed. But there was one item that was reduced by $700,000 that we will, you know, we have our eye on and will watch it as the, as the year plays out. And then finally, just to give you a quick update on the, the state aid that everybody has, has heard about, which is additional money, thanks to Senator Duff, coming in at the, at the last minute to get us $10 million a year for FY '26, FY '27. The, the purpose of that funding is really for roads, road maintenance, salt, plowing. And then if we could request a waiver to use it for other capital projects. And so, our intention, while 3 million of that will ultimately make its way into the part of the Board of Education agreement, my goal would be to not to minimize the amount that we use for operating because this is, as I said, it's for '26 and '27. I don't anticipate that we're going to have that windfall every year, every year beyond that. So, I'm hesitant to, obviously, we had a, a circumstances with the Board of Education where we thought it was prudent to give them more money. And so, that it was, I think it, it was a good thing to help finalize that deal with the Board of Ed. And, but going out into the future, my goal would be to, again, would be to minimize use on operating and use it more for, for capital projects and, and preferably capital projects that are in the, in the capital budget currently or in, in the second year's budget. And that's my update.
Thank you, Jared.
I'm happy to follow up and, and share. I do have a, a presentation that I can share with you and send it to the members.
Email that to the council members. Does anyone have any specific questions around the budget? And then also, don't go anywhere, Jared, because we may have some additional questions because we've been, you know, we've been discussing capital budget and we may have some questions there. Anyone have any specific questions?
I have a general question. In the beginning of your presentation, you stated that there were leftover funds that were able to be compiled, and that was part of what we used to meet the requests of the Board of Ed. Where is that identified in the budget, if at all?
So, those will be, they, they are identified because the, what's going to end, what'll end up happening mechanically with the $3 million that's coming from the city. We will, we will actually identify specific accounts from FY '25. As of right now, the ones that we've selected have been, as I mentioned, when I was talking about some of the positive variances on the spending side, have been salary line items. So, our plan would be to take certain salary line items from certain department budgets, and that money would be transferred to the Board of Education, to the, in the amount of $3 million.
I know you're not prepared to do it tonight, and this is perfectly fine. But if you could please send an email to the council, just identifying a little bit where those were pulled from, so we just have an idea of what departments had an overflow or surplus, that would be, also be very helpful.
Absolutely, we'll do that, and we will have to do that as part of the process to get this approved because we'll, we're going to go to the Board of Estment Taxation and, and get that whole, that whole transfer has to go through the BET. And so, it'll be laid out there specifically where the money's come from, which, which salary accounts that money's coming from, and then how it's going into the, into the Board of Education budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just want to follow up. Thank you for the presentation, it was really helpful.
Sure.
So, the $500,000 item that was also earmarked for the BOE, is that reconciled the same way as the 3 million or?
So, the $500,000, as of right now, our plan is to, that that would come out of the state money as well.
Okay.
So, we have the, so we had 3 million from the city, and then originally 3 million from the state. We would take another $500,000 from the state money.
Mr. Goldstein?
Just, I, I think you made an interesting comment about the fund balance, or less more popularly known as the rainy day. I know we're trying to change the terminology on this. I know that in past years, we have listed or allocated money to come from the fund balance. And that generally, in the last few years, that has not actually been spent. Is that an accurate description of how we've reserved money out of the rainy day fund balance, but actually haven't spent it in a while and been able to preserve and grow that fund?
Right. We, I think we went back three years, we looked at the last three years, and there was budgeted the use of fund balance, but we never had to use it because we always had sufficient surplus in those operating budget years that we didn't have to dip into the fund balance.
And I think just for clarification, we, we've done the same thing this year, we budgeted, I think, 8 million in the budget, we just passed.
Correct.
And who knows, we'll see where. And who knows, we'll see where.
At this point, we, we don't think that we're gonna have to make that transfer, so.
Mr. Frey.
Um, yes, on, on the same subject, I, I think we shouldn't get um, too uh. Too excited about the fact that uh, we didn't use that uh, that uh, fund balance. Um, because every year we do do it, but the, the fact of the matter is that when we were putting the budget together. We're also putting it together very early before we know what the full amount that's gonna be expensed. Um, uh, for the year in the current budget. So in other words, if we counted on eight million dollars in last year's budget to bring us through to the end. Um, and when we're building the next year's budget, it's, it's usually done in February, March. Uh, where we really don't know what the impact is gonna be in the last quarter or four months of the year. So um, yeah, we can't get too, too jovial about the fact that we didn't use all of it. But it was there that we could use. And so it's, it's, I don't think it's setting a precedent that, that's next year it's gonna be. Um, you will, will be favorable uh, by twelve million dollars or anything like that.
Yeah, and, and I'll add to that too, that. If we don't, uh, if we don't end up putting anything into the fund balance. You know, we always, we always talk about the fund balance as a percentage of the budget overall. And currently we're at about, at about eighteen percent uh, fund balance to, to budget ratio. So if we, if we put nothing into it, next year, the budget presumably is gonna grow. But the fund balance doesn't grow. So that percentage, as we go along and as the years go by, that percentage drops if we don't put anything into it. So ideally, we, we are growing it. Ideally, we're, we're getting to a point each year where there is. Uh, we do have surpluses that we could um, continue to keep it at that same, at that same percentage. Which, which again, means the dollar amount in there has to grow uh, with the budget itself.
Are there any other questions? Or? For Jared. Um, so um, moving on, um. Where we had left off in our last meeting is we were talking about. Um, there's a ten sixteen. So this is jumping to the capital budget. Um, and it is um, section ten sixteen, the commission recommends several changes, including clarification of reinstatement. About it, the authority, yeah, and establishing a clear public hearing requirement. So um, so. And you know, there was some discussion around this. And so it just, for me, I'd like to hear your perspective on. Um, the council has had the authority in, in the charter to uh, reinstate items. Um, that were. On the capital budget and you know, kind of got, kind of all kind of came to a head last year and um. In these discussions about the firehouse. So um, they, they recommended, Charter Revision Commission recommended removing the word reinstate. And there were some, you know, discussions on the floor and Ms. Majewski, I believe you're back on, you know, you may want to um. Want to add your thoughts here, but um, you know, I'd just like to hear your, your perspective. As our CFO about, you know, that um, that reinstatement, the council being able to reinstate. A project that was originally recommended by the department, but not um, not approved by the mayor.
Sure. So the, I'll, I'll step, step back a little bit because I think there, there could be some um. Disagreement or discussion about what, what is it that you're reinstating? And I think we're um, me and Attorney Mednick ended up after uh, looking at, going through the process. Talking to the other members of the, um, of the commission was that. What would, what the reinstatement refers to would be items that may have been moved from the, from the capital budget. Into the operating budget and that those items could be reinstated into the operating budget. And that's what the councils, uh, uh, what the common councils authority would be. Into the cap, is that what, what did I say? Did I say the opposite? Yeah, from the operating to into the capital, back into the capital budget. Um, and so there, there is my, my. My opinion on the uh, on reinstating any other items is that. Um, that the, so the bottom line with any kind of capital projects is that they, you know, they start with the, they start with the, the mayor. And, and it's, it's basically, it's, it's the mayor's uh, agenda. And it's the administration's job to, to implement those uh, those projects. Um, obviously through the process of um, the BET's responsibility, the common council's responsibility. But ending up on something that everybody, ultimately, everybody has agreed upon. If, if it goes down, my concern is if it goes down the road of the common council restoring something. That wasn't uh, wasn't vetted fully through that, through that whole process. It's, the administration has the, has the ability not to do it. And if, and if it wasn't, if it wasn't agreed to by everybody, the, the administration. So you, you could, I guess you could put something in there to say that the, the common council can restore a project. But that doesn't mean that it's gonna be done because it's the, that, that responsibility lies with the administration. And, and I'm not, not saying this to be combative, it's just that, that's, that's the way it is. Whether it's, uh, whether it's Mayor Rilling or the next administration, whoever it is, it's their responsibility. And um, and, and it's their priorities uh, in terms of the timing of when those projects get done.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Jared? Capital budget, operating budget. Uh, Mr. Frey. We can't hear you, Jim. You're still mute, you're still muted.
No, I think he's trying to put your.
Still muted.
Thank you so much.
He's been defeated by Zoom.
Is it from our side? You're good.
Uh, so where was I? Um, on the same subject of this reinstatement, um. I, I guess it really comes back to uh, what I, what I've been saying lately is that. The common council really does have uh, quite a bit to say about what's gonna be spent and what's not gonna be spent. So this is just the opposite of what I've been talking about, even though there's something in the budget. The common council can um, can elect to, to not to go forward with that. I mean, we're the ones that allocate the, the funds uh, to grant to uh, the, the mayor. The ability to bond and, and so on and so forth. By the same token, uh, you're saying is the mayor has a, an offsetting balance and saying if, if we decided to put in. A firehouse and he decided that it was not in, in the cards right now. Uh, they could just let it sit there and, and not, and not move it forward.
That, that's a possibility.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, if there are no further questions for Jared, we can move on to um, other, other sections.
Thank you, Jared.
We do have to get through this. Thank you very much, Jared.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, so let's finish up where we left off, which was. Ten seventeen, so. Or we got our, we did article eleven?
No.
Okay, all right, so article eleven. All right. Um, under this provision, the commission recommends retention of the mandatory charter revision every five years. Do we have any discussion, Mr. Goldstein?
Yeah, um. I have had a number of discussions about this with members of the Charter Revision Commission. I know I've talked to various people around Rock about this. For those who don't know, and I'm sure we can sort of provide some numbers to this effect, a charter revision commission, not cheap. Um, to do it well, I mean, as you can see, Steve Mendick is sitting in the front row and there are resources that go into this. And the biggest reform to our charter, obviously, we're talking about governmental reforms now. The biggest job that happened was two years ago where we really made it a readable document. And that brought us a long way of the way forward. Um, so that we could literally understand the document because frankly, the old version of the charter, I, I'm amazed you were able to figure out what it said. Because a lot of us had really no idea. Um, and I'm making light of this, but not that far off the truth. Um, since we're in a different place now, I, I think it's something that we could consider once a decade as opposed to once every five years. Um. Additionally, you know, not only because of the resources it takes to do the charter, but because issues themselves sometimes take a little while properly. I've. I, I don't see, and of course, the, the council already has the discretion to call a charter revision commission at any point. Should there be an issue arise, which we feel that a change of the city charter is necessary. So I do think that it's good to have a commission come up periodically to um, comb through it and figure out if there are things we can do to make it better. But I, I think five years is probably a little too short, I would extend.
Other comments on that?
I mean, I, I respectfully disagree with that because I think that as a city with techno, technological advancements. And things that can change, I, I like the idea of having a five-year mandate. Because it kind of holds us accountable to doing that work every five years.
Okay, Mr. Lopez.
I guess for me, um, I agree with everything Mr. Olson just said too, but I think it's gonna be used as a mechanism repeatedly. To pursue undemocr, unsort of undemocratic initiative, like this constant push for minority representation, expansion. Of council, so you know, I think, I know some of the cities might mandate that it's every five years. But like Mr. Olson said, the council can commission if need be urgently uh, charter commission. So those are my thoughts.
I'm, I'm tending to, to agree with Mr. Goldstein on that, on the ten year. Um, given that um, any council can call a commission at any time and the expense. And I think that, you know, there are, you know, over these next five years, there are probably some other areas where we can, we can invest. Um, I'm not saying I'm like, you know, hard and fast, this is, this is, you know, what I think right now. I, I wanna spend a little more time mauling it. Um, I do have a tendency to think, you know, looking, looking at it, you know, over the course of the last couple of years. We, we, we really made those major changes to clarify um, the charter and make it readable and, you know, cleaned up a few things. And this, you know, we're looking at some, you know, very specific changes. I think that probably the changes we would be looking at um. In the future. I think we need some time to live with what these changes might be, right? They, they'll all go to referendum, you know, uh, you know, the, the voters will vote, uh, whether. With any of these changes, you know, we don't know because it will be up to the voters ultimately. So I think it might, it, it probably behooves us to just see where we end up, live with the changes for, you know, five years. And then look at um, at, at calling another commission or waiting for ten years. Mr. Mendick, you have a comment?
If I may, thank you, Madam President, the um. What we tried to do two years ago, as you may recall, is provide a lot more flexibility in the charter. And that is to try to push things to your code of ordinances to this body. Um, so that when you wanna do a government reorganization or department, you wanna add a new department, you wanna eliminate a department. You want to add boards or commissions or eliminate boards or commissions and merge. This charter gives you the ability to do those things without having to go through a charter revision process. The important thing to remember is when you're doing major structural things like that, is that um. Uh, you need a ruling from your corporation council that you're not eliminating a charter function. So as long as you're not eliminating a charter function, because that's what we were trying to do two years ago, to create a functional charter. Um, you can do an awful lot of things within the context of the um, of the charter. There was one other point I was gonna make. Yeah, the, the other point I was gonna make uh, was this. Um, on technology, which I think I do share your, your interest and concern. But in some of the definition sections, we do try to acknowledge that there will be technological changes and have broad enough. Language to allow for ordinance-based uh, re-response. Um, and, and I think that that's very important um, as well. One of the other areas that you may look at in the future is your budget process. Um, there's one thing you can do by, it's not by ordinance, but by action of this council. Uh, we just did it in another community that I'm involved in for the first time. Um, you can change the dates in your budget process, basically amend your charter by a two-thirds vote of the legislative body. If you want to experiment with different timeframes in your budget process. So you can't change the elements of the process. If there's a requirement for a public hearing, you can't eliminate the public hearing. You can't add a public hearing. Well, you can do more, as many public hearings as you want. But you have the ability to move your dates around considerably. So if you wanna go beyond the April fifteenth date, you can kick it out wherever you wanna kick it out. So you have that flexibility, that's not something we gave you, it's something that uh, Speaker Ritter actually gave you in two, twenty eighteen. Passed some legislation that allows for, for date changes in that process. So there is considerable flexibility and the other point I would make, which I believe the majority leader made earlier. And I think the president is that um. You can do a charter revision anytime you want. Uh, and uh, and, and it, and, and the last point, it's your constitution. And um, my view on it is you let the constitution simmer for a while. Uh, the reason for this revision, two years after the first revision, was to address some of the more difficult political issues. That we weren't able to address two years ago because we wanted to fix the structure of the document. And with that achieved, they called for a very short charter, not a five-year, but a two-year uh, review. And that's what you're going through right now. So um, I'm not here to advocate, but I'll also point out one last point. Um, I don't believe there's any other community that has a five-year um, turnaround. It's mainly ten-year turnarounds, mainly because it's a constitutional document and uh, I'm trying to think about that. Uh, I, I don't, I, I can't think of any of the major cities that have that, so um, I just wanted to make those points for the record.
Thank you, thank you, very helpful.
I only wanted to make one thing and, and I see Jim's here and I, I just was curious. Cause I know this was a source of contention for the Charter Revision Commission and it would be nice to just sort of. Hear some rationale so, so that in case there's some point we haven't thought of, which is like entirely possible.
So regarding the timeframe for charter revision.
I don't think your mic's on.
Used the mic a couple of times. So there was a lot of robust discussion about this and I think that uh, we at one point were. Uh, tending towards the ten-year timeframe for charter revision. There was a number of us that felt like maybe there was uh, enough unfinished business, even with this charter revision that we might. Um, and so eventually we came down to, to recommending a five-year. But in our discussions, we uh, noted that perhaps after a five-year. The next charter revision commission might actually, if they felt the work was sufficient, they would wanna revise that again. In the next, in the next um, uh, in the next revision to have charter revisions every ten years. Because it is, as Attorney Mc said, our constitution. And if it's, if it's settled and in place, it's not like you wanna keep messing with it all the time. Uh, but uh, we have been in this process of cleaning it up, which is, I think, you know, I think we've not completed the process. But we've taken it another step forward and that's why I think that uh, for this cycle, we're saying five years. And sometimes we are so busy, uh, and you guys are incredibly busy that if it's not mandated, you kind of can put, put it off. Um, I would, now this is my opinion now, not, not the charter vision, but it's my opinion that once the, a next cycle. If you did approve the five-year, then the next cycle, I believe that, that we would, uh, there would be uh, enough folks that would probably. Um, be in line with the idea of now changing it to a ten years after that. For the reasons probably that uh, some of you already spoke about expense and, and uh, not just continually. You know, fiddling with our constitution, so is that uh?
Yeah, no, I think that was great.
Thank you.
I also would just make one additional comment, just because looking at Jim right now, I thought you said something in one of our initial meetings that I really liked. And I just wanna bring it up again, which was having a brief description at the beginning of each section to just do a basic explainer. So that any resident here can just. just do a basic explainer, so that any resident here can just have a basic understanding of what a section of the charter is all about. And I, I, I actually thought that was a really wonderful recommendation. I didn't see it encompassed in the letter here, you know, in the transmittal letter. I'm not, I don't think it's actually in the document. But I, I just, I remembered you saying that, and I thought that was actually something we should do. Um, I don't know if you had any other thoughts on that subject.
First of all, thank you. That's not my original idea.
You could have taken it.
That, that idea really, I think, was, was bought, brought by a resident, uh, or at least a version of that idea. Uh, and so, um, and so that is kind of out there in, 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 in the world, people thinking that. But yes, we do need this document to be understandable. And if you would recommend something along those lines, where we, you know, have that, each chapter has a readable, understandable, you know, a couple of sentences.
preamble.
Yeah. It's because it's not changing anything. I think it would be very helpful. Um, yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, and, you know, I know with the last one, I mean, just organizing and the, um, the table of contents was huge. You know, and breaking it down section by section, it's like, oh, now I know exactly where to look for what, what I need. So.
You know, the mayor.
One step at a time.
In, in the last process, Mayor Rilling, um, pulled me to the side one evening and said that when he became mayor, he had to look at about seven different sections of the charter to figure out what the responsibilities were for the mayor.
It was crazy.
And it was, it was just, uh, insane. And, um, yeah, so I think we resolved that last time.
Yeah. Quite well. Ms. Edie.
Oh, Ms. Edie. No, I just wanted to piggyback off what Josh, um, had mentioned. Yes, our resident did reach out about, um, kind of making the document, um, I don't know how you say, easy to read, um, maybe a little more digital, um, so that you could, you know, figure it out quicker. And I thought that was an excellent idea. I will find the email, because I was saying this is two hundred and eighteen pages. I don't think I can read two hundred pages. But if I had something that I could go to in pinpoint to where I need to go to, I think that is fantastic. Um, and he offered two different designs for it, which I thought was cool, and I think more people would be engaged to even read it, to understand what the charter is, because before this time, you being around you guys, I wasn't paying attention. So I'm sure there's a whole bunch of people telling the same thing. But anyway, like that thought, love that thought. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on this item? Oh. It's, oh, Ms. Dunn is online.
I just want to say, I think that's Chris Dwyer, if that rings a bell. DW.
Yes.
I think that's the person who brought it up.
Oh, okay.
Chris.
Chris, okay. Good job, Chris.
And actually, I think he's online, too.
I think he is too, yeah.
May I say something? Um, I'm sorry, council person Dunn, are you finished?
Yes, thanks.
I didn't want to control, okay. Um, I, I see the conversation, um, about five and ten years. Yes, we need to clean up the document. Yes, it is a lot more user-friendly. But hearing from those citizens that participated in public participation, the controversy has to stop at some time. But I don't think the controversy is going to stop by us waiting ten, ten years, and hopefully these people don't have the voice. I, I don't think that's the way to address it. I think the fact that we are able and we have a process to revise the charter is democratic all in itself. And I would hate to have the work that not only the current charter revision did, but the one that precedes them have to wait ten years for someone else to pick up that work. I think that's lost institutional knowledge. Anything can happen in ten years. That's lost institutional knowledge that I don't think would benefit us not to have. Um, I do agree with maybe five years, and then after that, five years, ten years, but I, I don't think any of us ever want to be in a position when any resident feels that we are being undemocratic. Uh, for whatever reason, you know, people have their different opinion. So I, I think that that five-year point, because we do not want to lose the historical, um, information, the historical conversation, the historical discussion that had been brought forth in these last two commissions, I think that's why we should really consider the five-year.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? All right. Uh, next article, oh, there's no changes in Article twelve, Arti- Article thirteen and fourteen, these provisions will be repealed or recodified as set forth in Articles one through eleven.
Can you explain what those are?
Sure.
I will be very brief. During the last charter revision, we had, um, um, put into the back of the document a number of departments, a number of sections that we didn't have the time to address, and they were the sunset provisions. And, um, so what we did in this process, they could have been sunset by legislation, but it didn't happen. So what we did in this process is we, um, eliminated those departments, went through department heads and made recommendations. We made recommendations about what we could eliminate, and those sections that are not eliminated are now kicked into the body of the document, which you'll find in the annotations. There's still a couple, and maybe at the next meeting, I can go over it with you, where there's still a couple of areas that I might ask you for a recommendation, so that we might fix it in the next phase of the charter commission to thin down some of those departments a little more and bring the, the page count down a little bit, because a lot of departments opted to keep more than they should have, not realizing that they have most of that authority under the Home Rule Act. Um, and so we could probably thin it down a little bit more, but those sections are, are gone, so the charter is considerably reduced. The only thing we couldn't do is anything with the taxing districts, and there's nothing in the taxing district sections that were done by the charter commission's process.
All right, so let's go back. I think. I think we were about to tackle Article four. Am I correct? We did three dash four, clarification of the formalized parts of document reapportionment of council districts by ordinance. Okay, all right. So let's go on to Article four. Um, keeping in mind, we've got about ten minutes before we want to finish up. We do need, because it is a council meeting and it requires every iPad to be changed over, we do need a good amount of time for IT to, uh, to deal with that. So, um, under Article four, four dash four, C three, B, and C, transfer of appeals provisions pertaining to the assessment of damages for the taking of land for creating sewers and drains from special act provisions contained in Section thirteen dash or C three. Any comment or questions or discussion? All right. Moving on to four dash seven, C, minor modifications to the authority of the council to establish compensation for all officers and employees of the city by recognizing the requirements of collective bargaining agreements. The provision also eliminates the language required, a referendum for council salary increases, since the general statutes already provide for such referendum. And so I know we're going to have some discussion here, and I'm going to, you know, just say we'll probably stop in the middle of the discussion uh, and, and pick this up at the next meeting. But, uh, let's, let's get started on that. I know that we're going to have some comments, so, um, questions, comments from council members online or. Compensation.
I guess I'll start.
Thank you.
We've had all these conversations around compensation. Um, again, going back to public comment, I think one of the, um, Mr. Barnafon, who I have great respect for, mentioned that it's a, it's a grab to be greedy. It really isn't a grab to be greedy. Um. I, in reading this, I don't think about me. I think about the people who are coming behind me. Um. We say that we are volunteers, but I don't think any volunteers put as many hours in as we do. And I think it is disingenuine to expect council people to take fifty dollars a month. I tried to donate it, because it was such a small amount. I tried to donate it to a local charity, and I was told I couldn't donate it. I had to take it. And I'm like, okay. Um, and the fact that it does not even taken consideration for those of us who have children. Um. My, I have a twenty-three-year-old who is special needs, who's older now, but there would be no way that I would be able, when he was in middle school or elementary school, to participate in the common council, because to get a babysitter for him was seventy-five dollars an hour. And you're giving me fifty dollars a month. So that's not. I was qualified to serve, but there was this barrier that did not allow me to serve. And I don't think anybody, from my perspective, is not that I'm trying to supplement my income. I'm, I'm fortunate enough that I'm paid and paid very comfortably. It's, it's the acknowledgement of the respect of our time. That's what it is. It's the acknowledgement that my time has worth and that I'm being compensated for the time that I freely give. I am not saying, and I know that, um, throughout the state, there's a fluctuation of what is given. I'm not saying that we should be, um, making the compensation anywhere to the point of someone can live on it. But I am, I am saying that it should allow us to put gas in our car. And I don't know, unless we're using, no, that wouldn't even work, unless we're using some type of technology that has not yet been made. I, I don't see, I don't see this compensation being substantial enough for us to volunteer in a meaningful way. So that's my thing, my compensation. It's really for those parents, those, um, individuals that might have a barrier to help them come to this table and serve and not have this table then be a hindrance. People fail to realize, some of us, based on our jobs, lose money being on a council. Because the hours that we're spending doing council stuff are billable hours that we're not billing corporations, councils, or whatever. And so i- it's, it's like we're asked for the ultimate sacrifice, but the ultimate sacrifice has the benefit of what? You're not even able to cover your most basic need of getting to the meeting. So that's.
Other comments, Mr. Goldstein?
So, I, I just want to. If you look at the actual text, just to, and Steve can help me splice this out if I interpret this incorrectly. But the first part of it has to do with making sure that the compensation of all other employees are in accordance with any applicable collective bargaining agreements, which I don't think any of us have any problem. So, so that's, that's the first part of that language. The second part is count, except for the salary, council members who shall receive no less than six hundred dollars per annum per year, which is what we receive right now. And, and, and basically, it's, there's no actual provision in this language that says the council should get paid more, because it's basically taking out a referendum requirement that already exists at the state level. So. You know, I, I just, I want to make sure what the language actually says versus what people think it says. I think there's a little bit of a diversion because there's nothing in this charter that's saying, that's affixing a new salary, you know, or a higher salary for council members. So that's just part. Part two is the sort of the merits, and I think Nicole, uh, Councilmember Ayers had a lot of meritorious points. I think it's very hard to square a lot of the financial challenges that we've had as a city, a lot of the issues having to do with the Board of Education in recent years, and then believing that we're in a position where we can give ourselves a pay raise. That's not something that I am comfortable with, and if an amendment like that were proposed on the floor where essentially would make it easier for the council or the, um, if there was an amendment to, like, set it by a percentage or something, while I understand the merits of the argument, it's not something I'm going to support. Um, that's my take. I realize people might disagree. But a- and, and I agree wholeheartedly with what Nicole said about how, you know, there are, um, real downsides, and it provides a real challenge, because we do want a council that's diverse in every respect. And frankly, having a council that is basically, essentially a volunteer council, means that certain kinds of people are more able to do this job as opposed to others, which is inherently unfair. I don't think there's really a dispute on this one. I just can't swear the what the message that sends to the Norwalk residents. And I, I, I think that symbolism matters, and I think it would send a powerful message that I just don't condone. You know, that's, that's my take, but just to bring it back to what we're actually talking about tonight. If you read the language and it's on, you know, it's funny, I don't see this as paginated, but it's um, four dash seven, C, if you read it's one paragraph, and I basically read the paragraph out loud on the record, there's nothing in here that says the council is going to get paid.
Mr. Mendick.
Could I just say?
Sorry.
Well, thank you, Madam President. Um, the majority leader is absolutely correct. The only change to that section was the elimination of the referendum requirement, because it's redundant. The statute still requires it. So if you want to raise compensation, you have to go to referendum um, in the city. The people in the community would vote on any compensation, so there's no effort in this charter. It was discussed, it was debated, um, and the, the commission decided to rest on this issue of eliminating the redundancy of having, um, the statutory language in the body of the document.
So let me just, you know, I'll, I'll just read it with the, um, with the language that's strict, strong. Okay, so, um, compensation fixed by the council. The compensation of all officers and employees of the city of Norwalk shall be fixed by the council in accordance with the applicable collective bargaining agreements, if applicable, except the salary of the council members who shall receive no less than six hundred dollars per annum. Compensation, compensation, that's it. And so what it does is it strikes the language. Okay, so that's how it reads. It strikes the language in accordance with the general statutes, any proposed increase in the compensation of, of the members of the common council must be subject to confirmation by referendum. Did I get that right?
I, I think it's six hundred dollars per annum and such additional compensation as may be permitted by law.
Okay. Okay. All right. So let me read that part again then, because I missed that part of it. Except the salary of council members who shall receive no less than six hundred dollars per annum and such additional compensation as may be permitted as may be permitted by law. Okay. All right. Um, we do need to finish up, so, um, we will hold here. Um, hold your thoughts, and we will pick up right here at our next meeting. Again, we don't have it scheduled, but, uh, you know, keep your eye on the calendar. It will be early next week at a six o'clock time when we can fit it in for the holiday. Okay, uh, with a vote scheduled for the July eighth common council meeting. Okay, um, motion to adjourn. Ms. Winterspoon, all in favor? Okay, we are adjourned.